And your volume is working.
I do it, man.
Thank you. That's our audience mic.
Alright, hello everyone.
Hey y'all.
The call in number up?
Call in number up.
Oh, I forgot to put it on our post.
That's alright. Are you on the show page, Lizala?
Yes, I am.
Alright.
Show page, y'all, y'all on the, we live.
This is W N R V one eight point one.
Alright.
You ready?
Yep.
Three.
Smile Larry.
Aha. I want to need my glasses.
Three, three, two, one, oh wait, 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 shit. What happened to your cord? Okay, now you ready? Three, two.
Welcome to the headline eye. I am your host Larry H Gardner. And that H stands for hot one because we got a hot one in here right now. You are listening to W W W dot N uh W N R V one zero eight one dot com. Nerve DJs, we getting on your nerve. Calling numbers two one six. I mean, oh, yeah, it is two one six area code two four nine six six five eight. On this May fifth? Yeah, May fifth.
Cinco de Mayo.
Yeah, Cinco de Mayo, May fifth. Two thousand and twenty one. And the reason that I'm on a high is because I had a very good weekend.
What happened Larry?
Alright, first of all, before I get to the grand finale, the NFL draft was here.
Yes.
Cleveland Browns made some great picks. Shout out to Greg Newsom and linebacker from Notre Dame J O K. That's his initials. Camp is, it has, it's been drafted along with a couple of other people along with this guy named Matthew Schwartz, who, who runs a four two eight. That's always good when you, if you're running from the cops, but still. It's not why he was drafted. I'm just playing about the running from the cops part. But we brought both of our guests in here and after the NFL draft, I had a couple of other things going on, including my baby boy Jalen turned nine years old on Sunday. Happy birthday, my baby boy Jalen. Shout out to my son, uh, turned nine years. It's, it's like, it's a blessing to have a nine year old that broke me on Sunday. So if I ain't got no money, if I'm, if I'm gonna send out my cash app, I really mean it, Cash App L H G three one three one. I'm play, I'm not playing this time, I'm really am serious. I'm like, yeah. We saw Mortal Kombat, which is always fun.
Okay.
So that, that was fun, so. Um, and Jalen loves to read. Speaking of reading, Lizala, what we have going on as far as reading for people?
Well, for the readers in our audience, I wanted to let you know that the Cuyahoga County Public Library will be starting its summer reading challenge on June 5th. And you can go online and sign up today or get the details um, at the county library website, which of course I did not write down.
He's going to Cal.
Cuyahoga County uh, Public Library, or you can go to your local library.
Mm-hmm.
It's for adults and or children, so everybody has an opportunity to um, join the challenge. It runs all summer, you read as many books as you can, you track it, there's prizes. There's half mark prizes and end of the, at the end of the time, uh, there's prizes, so. Uh, you know, I'm just out here, I really support reading, out here trying to get everyone to read, so. I think this is a fun way to do it, I registered yesterday.
That's, that's what's up, so register, go to the Cuyahoga County Public, um, you said Cuyahoga County Public Library.
That's right.
They open there?
Yeah, they are open.
Alright, alright, so they open, just like the Cleveland Public Library, so. No excuse, we're a mad social distance, you know what to do if you're not fully vaccinated, even if you are, be safe for others. The human T-Rex on the ones and twos right about now, thank you very much, we got our guest in the building, so please play the introduction music. So, I chose this song because uh, this is a candidate for Ward Seven, so. We're gonna be very careful with him, so we're gonna play a little bit of jazz with a little bit of hip hop, that's why I chose this song. It's called, it's the instrumental to Tupac's Picture Me Rollin', and right now, we have a candidate rollin', rollin', rollin' into the candidacy of Ward Seven. Please welcome my guy, Mr. All Around Activist Mike Seals in the building. What's going on, Mike?
Hey, thank you for having me Larry.
Okay, no problem, man.
Glad to be here, glad to be here.
Yeah, I had to play that, I'd like, that, that was a smooth out jazz verse.
Hey, I like it.
Picture Me Rollin'.
Picture Me Rollin'.
So, let's get down to business, Mike, why are you running for Ward Seven?
Well, you know Larry, uh, uh, I've been an activist and a community organizer for uh, a number of years now. And, and as a organizer, uh, with one of the largest unions in the country, mainly my job was to uh, identify leaders in our communities. But uh, it, it comes a time, you know, when you have to take it to the step next level, so. Uh, basically, the reason I'm running is because, you know, I've witnessed a lot of change in our city, you know, in my ward as well. But, but what I have not seen is a lot of progress for our constituents in our ward. And so, I, I wanna be a part of, of the change that's coming, you know, as we all know, there's gonna be quite a change in the city of Cleveland. Not only in the city of Cleveland, in our whole political landscape. Uh, you know, with the new congressperson, uh, we're gonna get a new mayor, possibly. We're gonna get a new council president. Uh, let's see, a new Cuyahoga County Party Chair.
Okay, yeah.
Likely. So, you know, I just wanna be a part of the change, you know, um. What, what, what we do know is that in nineteen sixty seven, Cleveland made city council history, when they elected the first African American uh, to uh, be a mayor, mayor of a major city.
Right.
But what we did know, or what many of us don't know, is that in twenty eighteen, when this present administration was sworn in, was the first time that Cleveland had nine members of color and eight whites. Which translates into the minority becoming the majority. And, and, and when you weigh that in, you know, only God can do something like that in a city. One of the most segregated cities in America, so that was a confirmation for me that change is coming, and I wanna be a part of God's plan.
So you wanna be a part of God's plans, you wanna, that change is coming.
Absolutely.
So you, uh, Lizala, you have a question for this young man, Mr. Seal City, next to you.
You know, um, so what's your biggest issue, what's your, on your platform?
Well, my biggest issue is that, you know, uh, according to the US Census, uh, as of October twenty twenty, Cleveland is now the poorest large city in America. And, you know, uh, part of my ward sits in House District Ten.
Okay.
Which consists of a hundred and four precincts.
Okay.
Sixty-six of those precincts sits in the, in the poor black neighborhood. But then the other forty-something precincts sit, it covers downtown, Cleveland Clinic, Westernburg, Reserve, University. So now, when you, when you consider that, it's the richest house district in the country. Yet we're the poorest city in the country.
Okay.
Because it's the only house district with three professional teams, you got the Browns, the Indians, the Cavs. You got state control gambling with the Jack's Casino.
Yep.
You've got access, direct access with Cuyahoga County River to the, to the sea for trading. So, so it's just, it's, it's, it's a matter of balancing, you know, it's, it's mismanagement of the funds of the poor and the working.
And our resources.
So, yes, absolutely, so the money is here, it's just disproportionately distributed.
It's downtown and university circle, and if you live in between, you can't go to either place.
There you go, so, you know, I wanna be a part of the change that, that, that sort of balance out. And, and the only way to do that is through political process.
Right.
When you weigh in the fact that sixty million dollars for a new scoreboard for the Browns, two hundred and forty million dollars to remodel the Q, another hundred million dollars to build for a Fortune five hundred company. So, so, which ultimately led to us being the poorest city in the country.
So as councilman, how can you affect that?
Well, as councilman, you can affect that through legislation.
Okay.
So, you know, if you, see, here's the thing. Dan Gilbert didn't come to the average Joe to get that money to remodel the Q. It has to be legislated.
Yeah, he went to the city for sure.
There you go, it, it has to be legislated, so our legislators who makes our laws are the ones who pass that legislation to give these billionaires the money. And I wanna be a part of the legislative process, so we can start giving the money more to the people.
Okay.
Right.
So I'm, I'm, I'm sort of, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm with the ninety-nine percent to say the least.
Okay.
So you were against the Q deal altogether?
I was totally against the Q deal, because I don't think that, you know, uh, I think two hundred and forty million dollars could have been better spent than to give to a billionaire.
Right.
And we could have given it to the schools.
Absolutely, we got struck in schools, that's another issue I have. Uh, when you weigh in the fact that, you know, it, it, Cleveland school system is the only district, which is Cleveland school district out of six hundred, I don't know the exact number, over six hundred districts in the state, we're the only ones that don't elect our school board members. That's not, that's not to say that it's secure, but we have to do something by way of change, because what we're doing now with the uh, legislative control school system is not working.
So the thing is, is that what, if you were elected in Ward Seven, what was the third, first thirty days of your um, city councilship would look like, as far as the first thing you would change?
The first thirty days, I would, what I planned to do, I'm gonna say proudly, because this is what I'm gonna do.
Okay.
First thing I wanna do is to get together with our council and form a legis, a legislative Black Caucus. Okay, because numbers mean everything in a governing body. And so in order to implement change, we need everybody on the same page.
Right.
So that's what I would uh, advocate for. A uh, and then I would address the uh, you know, who's gonna, who's gonna run our uh, council.
Okay.
You know, cause um, I don't think our council president has did a very good job.
Mr. Reckon, reject.
And that's a very important seat, there's three seats I'd like to see changed.
Okay.
That's the mayor's seat, council president, and the safety committee chair.
Mm-hmm, okay. You know, I jumped right into what are your issues?
Well, education.
Yeah, so what, I'm gonna backtrack a little. How are you qualified?
Well, I've been on the front lines of uh, of uh, every campaign, you know, and uh, I mean, when you say qualified, what do you?
So when someone sees your name on the Ward Seven ballot, cause you're not the only one running, right?
Yeah, it's like you got a lot of people.
Someone sees your name, why did they pick Mike Seals instead of one of those other two?
Well, well, here's, here's the, I, I, I'm heavily involved in Ward Seven. I, I served as the deputy ward leader for the last four years, I'm also president of the Ward Seven Democratic Club. And I'm also a precinct committee person, and also sit on the executive precinct committee person. So, so I've been, I, I've been very active in uh, Ward Seven, and when you, when I, when I bring my resume up, you know, I was um, in the um, twenty seventeen gubernatorial race. We were, because as a precinct committee, was effective in creating campus jobs
Mm-hmm.
in Ward Seven, and not just a job of a livable wage paying down. We uh, we were able to, because here's the thing. A lot of times campaigns have money attached to them. But when they come into your ward or your district, the first thing they ask for is volunteers.
Yes.
So, you know, we were able to counteract that, because we created our own campus team. And, you know, we, we were able to extract, because a lot of times, when you look, when you, when you weigh in the fact that the money of these campaigns always seemed to go to the coordinators, and those coordinators are usually people who are not from your community.
Mm-hmm, I know I have knocked on many doors and done a lot of volunteer work um, for many candidates in my state.
I mean, we, not to say we're, we're not goodwill ambassadors.
Oh, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I know that the coordinator was typically the one that was paid to get it done.
So let me give you a good example of, of one of our latest endeavor in, in that regards. On the Elizabeth Warren campaign, during the twenty twenty primary moved into Ward Seven. Now, we crunched the numbers. Elizabeth Warren campaign had raised sixty-seven million dollars. Had spent thirty-seven million dollars prior to moving into Ward Seven. In the first conversation we had with the uh, regional director, she wanted volunteers.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And they had twenty-six million dollars on hand. So, you know, that, that's something that we have to really start taking a, a look at, you know.
I, 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 I really take offense to some people like volunteers, because here's the thing. You're gonna have people knocking on doors, asking for the vote for lighting, hanging stuff up. And I don't think, when I started doing political canvassing at all, that I was ever volunteering. I think that every time that I did something, I got paid to do it.
Oh, okay.
So the thing about it is, like, if you wanna volunteer, that's fine, volunteer your time, because you believe in that person's going to win. But if you have twenty-seven million dollars, then you're not spending it in those particular areas of advertising, cause none of those dollars, none of those Warren dollars came here. Or the, the, those, you know, and as far as that, you know, those things, you know, came here, so. I'm really just say, like, the thing about it is, I take offense to sometimes that, and I think it's, I'm gonna sound like I'm backtracking off Roland Martin, but damn, but screw it. Uh, black media is very important, stations like this, you know, things of that nature. It was very important, you're not spending any, any advertising dollars here, I really don't care what you, okay, so, um, just throwing shade out there. And hopefully somebody catches it.
I just wanna make sure people know that you have put in the work.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And not only in my ward, I've, 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 you know, I've worked on everybody's campaign, I've worked on Jeff Johnson's last campaign for the mayor's race. Uh, Anthony Harrison, um, let's see, who else did I work with? Uh, Joe Jones.
Joe Jones' campaign?
Uh, yes. So I've been active politically for quite a few years, I've worked on every campaign from Senate Bill Five to the repeal of the Q deal, I wanna make that clear.
The repeal of it.
The repeal of the Q deal.
So, your tribe is everyone opposed to Q deal?
Absolutely, absolutely, because I don't think the wealth of the poor should be wasted on a billionaire.
That's right.
Which seems to be the norm, and that's why I'm running for council, because you know what, when you think of Fannie Lewis, you think of one of the best councilpersons who ever come through the city.
Right.
But you gotta keep in mind, Fannie Lewis's best work was done at six oh one Lakeside.
Yeah.
And it reflected on Ward Seven.
Yeah.
Because actually, as a councilman, you work at City Hall.
Yes.
So would you, would you have an office in Ward Seven and an office in City Hall?
Absolutely, absolutely, but you know what? Oh, the magic works and comes out of City Hall. And how often have we seen politicians who come in with good intentions? Once they get to the city halls and the state houses, and even the governor's mansion.
Right.
You know, if they're not aware of how the corporate forces work, they can quickly become a, a, a collective influence on our, our politicians, and, and when that happens.
Constituent calling you now, hey, you're on air, he's on air.
And see, 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 when, 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 when our leaders allow corporate interests to corrupt them, then we, the people come like sheep without its good shepherd and corporate wolves.
So.
Just feed on us, so.
Alright, so.
It's important to have the right people in place.
Exactly. Now, you work um, at the African American Museum?
No, I do not, no, we, I organize a candidate forum, you know.
For the Congressional District eleven, so you're working, so.
Which was the first forum that all of the candidates were able to be face to face, although before then, there was Zoom.
Right, Zoom conference, things of that nature, so.
You only get to be first once, so we're proud.
That's good, so.
And it was organized by the Ward Seven uh, Democratic War Club.
So how, um, so what do you do now, and how would you transfer those skills? You know, you gotta have transfer to city council if you or when you are elected.
Well, hey, I, I've been, I've been uh, preparing for this for a long time, you know, all I need to do is get in the position. I'm, I'm ready, I've already worked with a lot of the candidates that I'm, I'm looking to be uh, my colleagues once I get into City Hall. So, so, and I, and, you know, hey, I've been working around City Hall for the last five, six years. So, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to go in and, and, and start, start, start working, man, you know?
You start working?
The first thing I wanna do is, I wanna form, cause here, here, here's what I've experienced over the last few years with our public officials. There's a division at City Hall.
What kind of division?
What kind of division?
Well, aga- against our councilmen, between our councilmen. You know, you got certain councilmen who's in this clique, you guys certain councilmen who's in that clique. So, you know, the thing is, how do we, how do we come together? You know, the first, on January the first in twenty eighteen, I was in, I was at City Hall when the swearing in was. And uh, I asked one of the council members, did they know that it was the first time that we had, the minority had become the majority? Which is important. That's very important. If you don't think it's important, I asked Mitch McConnell or Obama what the majority means in the senate. Um, and, and the reply was, oh, well, you know, Mike, I don't know, I have to look into that.
Yeah.
They mistake me for asking them rather than telling them, because it's the first time.
So is the division along party lines, or is it something else?
No, it's not along party lines, because all seventeen of our councilpersons are Democrats, we don't have any Republicans.
No Republicans?
Not a one.
Okay, now that's significant.
It's very significant.
That's big, but, but we still have problems on the east side wars instead of the west side wars, and that's the, that's the big problem.
That's why a coalition is important, because here's the thing, let's, let's, let's take my ward for example. Let's look at sixty-fifth and Superior. And then go over to sixty-fifth and St. Clair, I mean, I'm sorry, sixty-fifth and Detroit.
Uh-huh.
Okay, same street, same city budget. But on sixty-fifth and Superior, you have a liquor store, you got a laundry mat, you got moles used tire. When you go over on sixty-fifth and Detroit, the Detroit Shoreway, you got all of these investments. You got two remod, freshly remodeled theaters, it's just booming. So how does that happen? Same street, same city budget.
Hmm, that's crazy, so.
But let's look at, let's, let's, let's take it a step further. When you consider the fact that the safety committee controls sixty-five percent of the budget. And who, who was the um, chairman of the safety committee? That was Matt Zone.
Right.
He left.
He left.
So who's, so is there a chairman now?
So is there a chairman now?
There's a chairman, it's, 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 it's uh, Blaine Griffin, but he's new, he's new.
He just got there.
Right, I'm giving you an example how money can be steered, because Matt Zone.
Has the majority of the budget.
There you go, and that's his ward where all the boom is. So that's why I was, that reflects back to the three seats I want. I want the mayor, I want the, we want the uh, council president who appoints the chairman.
Kevin Kelly.
We want the uh, safety committee chair seat, cause that controls.
So you, so if you, so if you happen to be elected and Blaine's still there, uh, would you want him to step down from the chair, from that chair?
Actually, I think Blaine would be a good fit for the chair.
I mean, the thing is, is that I understand your concern, you know, as far as the mayor and everything, and then like, the thing about it is, like, every single city council seat is up for grabs, and you are a newcomer to, I mean, you work with political campaigns, but you are a newcomer to how your campaign goes. So how is it going right now for you as far as, you know, see what different events, how's it going for you?
Well, right now, uh, I'm mainly focused on getting on the ballot. Uh, it's a little early in the race now, so uh, the main thing is, we turn in our petitions on June sixteen. So basically, you know, uh, I'm just concentrating on trying to get
Trying to get.
the adequate amount of signatures, you know, and, and.
How many signatures?
We need two hundred to uh, make the ballot. And it, it's, it's, it's not a simple task as it sounds, because we have, you know, when, as I canvass, I'm noticing that a lot of people just are not interested in the political process anymore. I don't know if they disenfranchised over the years.
I think.
Disenfranchise is like eighty-five, sixty to seventy-five percent, and I'm going low here as a number. And shout out to Tamika Chandler, shout out to Andre Yarberow from Virginia, uh, also Shayla Gaynor. Um, and also Tamika Chandler, she said she moved to the west side because of the environment. How do you change the environment if you are elected from how it is now in Ward Seven? Because, you know, you had a young, dynamic person in Bashir Jones, who's now leaving Ward Seven to run for the mayor of Cleveland.
Well, I, I, I think, you know, it's, it's, it's a matter of, of making sure that we pass legislation that's not only favoring the rich and start to advocate for, for legislation that favors just the common person. You know, uh, I think that, I mean, the only way that Dan Gilbert got to two hundred and forty million dollars is that our legislators at City Hall voted on it.
Right.
So, let's, let's, instead of giving it to a billionaire, let's put it into the school system. Let's, let's find, absolutely.
Find ways to build businesses back up.
Exactly, so, so that's one of the things, just, just changing the legislative process in City Hall, because that's where it happens. If you look at all the developers, they don't come to the neighborhood to ask for favors, they go to City Hall. Because they know that the only way a developer can come into your ward is if the legislative leader allows him in.
Stan, shout out to Stan Wimmer, he said everything on the west side is cheaper. Okay, I, 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 wow. Thank you Stan for the, thank you Stan, AKA Captain Obvious. So, uh, it's um, the problem that the disparity uh, from the west side of Cleveland to the east side of Cleveland has been noticed very much. You know, so how would your leadership change that disparity? How would you, pretty much, how, how do you get the people to come out and vote in the first place?
Now, that's, that's the challenge right there.
That's the challenge.
But, but I think it's gonna take time though, you know, and, and I think, you know, the change that's coming to Cleveland, because if you, if you really weigh the pros and cons, all of our politicians have been there for a while. You got, you got Ken Johnson, who's been there for thirty-one years. You've got uh, Mike Palizic, who was elected in nineteen seventy-eight. Nineteen seventy-eight now.
Now, Palizic said he's not going anywhere unless, you know, he retire, he doesn't want to.
He's a nice guy, now don't get me wrong, but here's the thing. Things change, you know, like I, I was on the front line of the uh, fight for fifteen, and we had a hearing, let's give you a small example. We had a hearing at City Hall in regards to, and we had Dave, well not, uh, uh, Bert Saltzman, who was the owner of Dave's supermarket, representing the business community. And we had S E I U and all the other advocates, organizations who were pushing to uh, uh, raise the minimum wage. And so, in testimony, what Palizic said, and, and it's on the record, so, so uh, I don't have any reason to hold anything back. What he said was, he commended Mr. Saltzman for keeping his store in, in his ward. Especially after. Especially after the complexion change.
Yeah.
So now.
Go ahead.
I'm just saying that, that, that was sort of a confirmation for me that, you know, maybe. You know, when the culture changed, maybe you don't understand, to make a, a comment like that is, is a misunderstanding of the culture. Because I.
You know, and it's.
Maybe we don't understand, you know, so.
Yeah, that's true, you know, and it's an interesting thing, because if you live in his ward, you do have heavy police presence.
In Palensik's ward?
New, yeah, you've got that.
Right.
That very nice recreation center, I don't know how much can be used during the pandemic. But he does do things to actually make the ward livable, but then you have to look at how that happened.
Right, well, well, my thing is, you know, it, I think the funds should be. Distributed evenly. Why should one ward look any different than the other ward?
You're absolutely right.
So, you know, that's why I say this favoritism or this long time old buddy buddy situation.
Talking about, uh, you, you talking about career opportunities as well?
Exactly, I mean, we, we're talking, like she just stated. You got Palensik's ward that looks, he, he gets things done. Then you got Matt Zone, he gets things done. So, so, but the thing is, you got other wards that suffer.
Right.
So how does that happen? Like, I was giving the example of sixty fifth and Superior, sixty fifth Detroit. That's just a bit much. Same street, same city budget.
Oh, yeah.
So there must be, it mu- it has to be a change to distribute the, the, the distribution of funds. That's just the bottom line. The only way that that happens is through our political process.
Right.
Because they distribute, your, your, your political leaders distribute the fund.
But then how much does voting count into that too? So if you have more voters in an area, is it gonna get more attention? From legislators than an area where people aren't voting so much?
Well, that shouldn't, it shouldn't play a part.
But it does, doesn't it?
It does.
Well.
I've always heard it does, that's why I'm asking, like, you have to vote to get the representation.
But here's the thing, you're gonna get somebody.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Yeah.
So, because more voters come out in Ward One. Don't mean that they deserve to have better service than Ward Four, because it's all one city budget.
And I, I just say that's an important reason to vote is because you will get more attention when you do.
But here's, here's, here's.
I'm trying to raise the vote rate.
Well, I, I get that, but here's my pushback with that is that. You know, do, is my taxes lower because I have a lower voting rate? I mean, turnout in my ward? Or is it the same as yours?
Your representation is, yeah.
Yeah, I should share into that, that tax base, since I distribute, I contribute to it. I should share into it equally.
Well, that's why they said no voice, no vote, no vote, no voice. That's literally what, if you don't vote, you're not going to have the voice, you're not going to have the attention. So we need y'all to hit the polls and vote so that the city of Cleveland can um elevate.
Remember the last, speaking of your ward, Ward Seven, Ward Seven was won by seven votes. Let's just be honest.
Thirteen.
Well, it's for thirteen. Thirteen votes, well, I was six off, so it is, but it was won by a slimmest uh margin.
Yes.
So, you have to generate that, you have to generate excitement for your. Uh, do you have anything, so you're not, you don't have a website or anything as far as?
I have not set my website up yet. Like I say, one of the main things that I'm trying to do with my team is get on the ballot.
Or like social media at all?
Uh, yes.
Okay, where, where can people find you?
I um go to my webs, uh, my uh Facebook page, Mike Seals.
Mike Seals.
Yeah, and that.
You gotta accept my friend reports, brother. You ain't said, you ain't did that, you ain't did that yet.
I don't know that um you sent me one.
I did, I did, so it's the thing.
I'll, I'll accept it, send it, resend it.
Especially, you gotta be on my, otherwise you can't come back.
If someone wants to help you out, how can they reach you to do that?
Air code two one six three two four zero three zero nine.
Three two four zero three zero zero nine, okay.
Yeah, so, you know, like I say, we're, we're in the early stages of our campaign. And so, you know, the main focus right now is to get on the ballot. Uh, so we're knocking doors.
Okay.
Uh, as a matter of fact, we're having an event this Saturday. It's a pre-mother's day, you wanna read this to your uh.
Okay, go ahead, Liz Allen.
See what we got here, Saturday, May eighth from two to four P M. Pre-mother's Day appreciation, we've got free gifts to the first one hundred mothers, grandmothers, or great grandmothers. Special prizes for the youngest mother and the oldest great grandmother. They'll have light refreshments provided, and this is all going down at League Park. Six six zero one Lexington Avenue, masks are required, we must social distance, this is a free event. Sponsored by the Committee to Elect Mike Seals for Cleveland City Council Ward Seven. Come prepared to sign that petition so he can get on the ballot.
Absolutely, and it's an opportunity to meet.
And meet and greet and fellowship and enjoy your month, your pre-mother's day.
Absolutely, so we're doing a little.
What time is that event again?
It's gonna be from two to four.
Two to four.
At League Park.
At League Park.
The League Park, best place to be is League Park, pretty much.
Right in the center of the hood.
Right, center of the neighborhood, the community, so.
Plus, you know, uh Larry, uh, some of the events that I put on, uh, well, I didn't put on, I have to say, my team. We made sure, and, and we do things in Ward Seven to make sure that our voters are educated, which was the purpose. Of our eleventh congressional forum. You know, it wasn't to take a position or, or to endorse, it was just to purely educate our voters.
That was actually a great forum, but um I didn't, not everybody. Was, I don't, I didn't see any Republican candidates, but I saw Democratic candidates.
We, it was sponsored by the Ward Seven, let me make this clear.
Democratic Party.
Say, Mike, why you didn't have the Republican candidate? Because it was sponsored by the Ward Seven Democratic War Club.
That means no Republicans were present.
Well, she did, and we, we had a Republican there, they wasn't on the roster, but they were, they were in the house.
They were in the house.
So we didn't lock them out, well, you know, but we just didn't give them a platform.
Right, so it's.
So, yeah, yeah.
You could be there, but you can't say nothing.
Well, she, well, yeah, they said plenty, they, they're quite a, a social butterfly, but. They were decently in an order, so we didn't, we didn't uh make a lot of noise.
Well, it is, well, it is what it is, who cares?
So, and we also, uh, uh, we also gave a um town hall meeting at the Second Ebenezer Baptist Church. Three weeks ago in regard, in regards to um House Bill twenty two, which is the cell phone.
Oh, camera core.
Camera core, yeah.
Police officer or police officer in the process of the duty.
So your work, so who you work, so who was there with you, working with that, some names that we may know?
Uh, Pastor Aaron Phillips.
Uh, Shorehouse Baptist Church.
Uh, we had Charles E. Bibb, who was the uh creator of the coalition. Uh, I invited all of the, all four civil rights organizations. The uh National Action Network, uh, the NAACP, uh, uh, let's see, um. The Urban League, Urban League Guild, uh. And also, we invited all of the clergy community, which is the Cleveland Clergy Coalition. Uh, United Pastors and Mission, and um there was one more, we uh extended an invitation to. Uh, oh, Greater Cleveland Congregation. So, so, you know, and, and that's what I'm talking about there, you know, we need to start coming together. Because we got all these little pockets who's doing one thing, that's why when, when Mr. Bibb, you know, presented the coalition to me. That I jumped right on it right away, you know, because it, it, it's kind of reminds me of the. The, let's see, uh, well, originally, the twenty first Congressional District Black Caucus. Which later became the eleventh Congressional District Black Caucus. Hey, man, they used to meet every Monday night to discuss the issues and concerns. That we have in the African American community, and that is a lost, that, we, we need to get that back.
That became lost when they split up the district differently and covered a huge, a wider area.
Right, well, here's the thing.
So we do need to get that back going again. We also used to have a structure to where. You get to run this time, maybe you get to wait this time, we can groom you a little better, we don't have any kind of system like that.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, everybody.
Need a coalition where we can all be on one accord, because we are scattered. And, and, and you know, it's the political process.
Yeah.
In all honesty, just that keeps us in the position that we are in. Legislation is everything.
So you, so you think that, you know, better legislation, uh like you, have, have you had experience writing legislation? Or are you working with somebody to help you write with legislation?
I, I, I will be working with somebody, because you know, when you, when, you know, the thing is. You have to have the willingness to introduce it, because once you get to the legislation. They, they have people who help you write or, or, or word in and that type of thing, you know. This is one of the reasons why I don't understand why they're trying to pass this House Bill twenty two. Because anytime a bill is introduced, it has to go to, through the um. Legislative Service Commission. And they have to see that it makes sense, but see with House Bill twenty two, it says that you can't throw things at a policeman. You can't physically interrupt a policeman, which is already against the law.
But people have been calling for, activists have been saying, you know, if you see something, do something, so they have to.
And here's the thing, if you pass a law. Saying that it's a criminal offense to, to film a police officer. See, that, that puts our babies and our kids in danger, because you know what? We are attached to these phones.
Right, especially the younger generation, I mean, all of us, I mean, we pretty much. Smartphone lives, like, why do they, they, smartphone, you can do everything, email, print, you know. One of these days it'll walk by itself, probably the iPhone, probably do that same stuff, but still.
Tell you what, you leave out the house and, 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 and realize you forgot your phone, I don't care where you are, it's gonna be a panic. And it grips you right away. Uh, but so, hey, you know, like I say, the political landscape has to change, if we don't, but here's the thing. You know, we took a caravan down to the state house to protest the committee meeting. Which is the Criminal Justice Committee, and they had the meeting, so we protested the issue of the cell phone. So what they did is gave us a verbal agreement that they would take the language of the cell phone out of the bill. But like I say, it's just a verbal agreement.
Right.
So, we wanna be at that next committee meeting, so we can see it in writing.
Righty.
Right.
So, so is Kevin Convo, Councilman Convo, working on that too as well?
He was, he gave testimony as well, as well as the uh president of the NAACP of Cincinnati. We had uh, uh Reverend uh Pinky Butts who gave a phenomenal testimony, I mean. All testimonies after her was pretty redundant, you know, because she really laid it on thick. And ultimately, you know, I consider that them even taking the language. The, the cell phone language out of the bill, a victory, because here's the thing. When you consider the fact that in the Ohio State Senate. Republicans outnumbered Democrats twenty five to eight. Then when you look in the House of Representatives, they outnumber, Republicans outnumbered Democrats. It's sixty four to thirty five, so anytime a vote hits the floor. So I commend my state representative.
Good.
Yeah, my state representative, she squared her shoulders, you know, and I'm saying her name loud, Stephanie House. She was very instrumental in, in, in having her colleagues come to the hood, Ward Seven. To explain, you know, how this bill would affect us, so. I mean, hey, we, we, you know, but, but. You know, it's power in numbers.
Yeah.
And, and, and if, uh, uh, if something like this don't make your pillow hard at night, then. I don't know what to say, because this can be detrimental, so give them another reason to either beat us down or kill us.
Right, so, hey, well, shout out to Ms. House, who's been on here as well. What do you think about the NFL draft coming to Cleveland?
Well, uh, it was great for the business community.
Did you stop down there?
I did not, no, no, uh, I, I don't, you know. I don't know, downtown has changed so much over the years. You know, uh, I've seen a considerable amount of growth in our downtown area, you know, with the. New convention center, uh, four or five new hotels. Uh, fifty two million dollars placed this on downtown Public Square. But, you know, which afforded us to lastly uh host the uh R and C in twenty sixteen. Which we couldn't get within ten feet of, that's, that's another talk show. Uh, so, you know.
Forget the Cavaliers, Cavaliers won the championship.
Because you can't get within ten feet of almost anything going on downtown if you are not.
Right, and see.
If you don't have your pockets.
And that's why I have an issue with downtown.
Enjoy the draft if you're looking at money that went into this that's not going into my potholes.
Right, well, true.
Right, so, so we, see, the distribution comes back into play.
So you, you wanna change that?
I wanna change that, yeah, because you know what, here's the thing. Why are we giving a Fortune five hundred company like Sherman Williams a hundred million dollars of taxpayers' money?
While abating the school taxes.
Right.
While abating the school, the school taxes, so the schools are suffering while the businesses.
They're suffering, yeah.
To add injury, I mean, insult to injury. Did you, well, here's the thing, not one black contractor. Was awarded a, 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 a contract on that project, not one. But yet, we've got a nine members of color and eight whites. Now, how do I sit down? And bargain a deal like that? Because at the end of the day. The money can't be allocated unless we. As a legislative body.
Fight for it.
Yeah.
Right, gotta fight for it.
I don't, I just don't understand those timing things, so that's why I wanna be a part of the change that I, I see coming.
Okay.
So.
That's what's up, so, Mike Seals, you are out, like I said, how can people get in contact with you? Because I know the second guest is waiting in the wings back there, he a little bit a- antsy.
I'm glad I didn't have to follow him. But Jeff and I, we worked on quite a few campaigns, we worked on the Q deal together, we worked on uh Fight for Fifteen together. And uh, we, we still shoulder and shoulder, we just wasn't victorious. So as an organizer, you wanna win.
Right.
You know, see, this, this is not a, a job, it's a lifestyle, if you truly believe in what you're doing. So, and that's why I wanna be in a position to really make change.
Okay, give our listeners your number one more time.
Please do.
I'm at air code two one six three two four zero three zero nine, that's three two four zero three zero nine.
Right, and.
And go to Mike Seals' Facebook page, because it's packed with information.
Very much, very, very good, very good information, uh, Mike, so. Here's what we gonna do, I don't have like, the thing about it is, is that, you know, you came all this way, go back there in the green room or the blue room right now. Make you a small play take with you. And you can tag in the next person as we take a commercial break. Mike, you're welcome back, if you, I'm just playing, you're welcome back anytime.
Hey, I ain't the average candidate, so.
Shout out to Tamika Chandler and Stanley Wimmer, uh, when we come back.